Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening. As the hour is 6:40, I will call the Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting to order. This evening, the board has two interviews down in the Wheelwright Room for the Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee. We will conduct those interviews between now and 7 o'clock, and we'll be back for our regular business meeting at 7:00. Thank you.
For this week's report. The aliens are back with the Exeter UFO Festival. Information about the Coast Route 7 bus. National Night Out hosted in Townhouse Common. Vote in Honor of a Veteran Program launched. An update from the Exeter Public Library. And Exeter area craftspeople to be honored at an upcoming gala. For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glawacki, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you're new to the channel, please subscribe and hit the bell to get notified about new content. For our first segment, Gabe had an extraterrestrial encounter when he was alone in the office. Here's his report.
I was sitting at my desk, working on some videos, when I saw a bright light outside of the window. There were strange noises moving towards the entrance of the building. And then suddenly... Nothing. I went downstairs to see if I could hear anything, but all was quiet. Just as I turned back to head upstairs, I heard three loud knocks on the door. Cautiously, I moved towards the door and began to crack it open. And that's when I saw what had caused the noise.
Hello, I'm Pam Jenham. I'm with the Exeter Kiwanis. Every year, on Labor Day, we have the UFO Festival. And it's on Labor Day because that's when the real incident at Exeter happened. There could be things for the serious UFO people, and there's things for the kids. And most of the merchants now do a great job. And yes, and up at the Townhouse Common is where we have all the children's activities. We have children's crafts, we have children's games. And don't forget Saturday at noon time, because we have the alien contest, alien costume contest, and the alien pet contest. So any pet is welcome. You know, if you think your bear will stand being costumed, do it. Well, you'll have a great time whether you believe in UFOs or not. But the games, the food, and in fact, the trolley, which takes you down around to places in the seacoast where there have been sightings. And there's more than just the one by the horse farm, because there were quite a few that weekend. We are, this year, we are bringing back the Alien Ball. So it's going to be over in the park Saturday night. And I don't know if aliens are coming or not, but they are certainly invited. And then new, we have a jazz pianist, which really has nothing particular to do with UFOs, but he volunteered, and he's going to be playing up at the church on Saturday. I mean, you'll walk up and down border street and look at all the windows, and they are just amazing. So the townspeople have a great time, too. Remember, you could be abducted, be prepared.
Earlier this year, we worked with TripLink and Coast to explain the Route 7 On Demand service available to residents in Exeter. Our very own Gabe Perez takes a trip on the bus, as Will explains how it's done. Meet Gabe and Leslie. They have things to do, and TripLink and Coast's Route 7 On Demand can get them there. Route 7 On Demand is an advanced reservation bus service for Exeter and Newmarket. The bus runs four days a week. It's easy to use, and it's just a phone call away.
Good morning, you've reached TripLink.
Hi, I'm trying to figure out how to get to Market Basket.
Sure thing, let me help you with that.
TripLink may ask a few questions to see if you qualify for other services available through the TripLink Common Application. In Gabe's case, he doesn't qualify for any other services, so TripLink signs him up for Coast's Route 7 On Demand. Gabe is going to use the designated bus stops at Deep Meadow and Market Basket, so the fare is only $1.50 each way.
So you will get dropped off at Market Basket by 1:30 p.m., and you will be picked up after 3:00 p.m. You will receive the times in the automated message the night before your trip, would you like text or a phone call?
Yeah, a text would be great, thanks.
Okay, we'll see you on Thursday.
Leslie previously went to communityrides.org to apply for transportation services using the TripLink Common Application. If you're an older adult or a person with a disability, using the TripLink Common Application helps you identify and apply for a number of nonprofit transportation services that you might be eligible to use. If you don't have a computer or need help filling out the application, TripLink staff can complete the application with you over the phone. Since Leslie already completed the application, now she just needs to call TripLink to schedule her rides.
Hi, I'd like to get a ride to Rite Aid tomorrow. Can you pick me up at my house?
Yes, we can. What time would you like to be there?
I'd like to get there at 1:45 and get home by 2:45.
Great, we've booked your trips. You'll get your reminder phone call with the pickup times at around 6:30 p.m.
On the day of your ride, Coast will pick you up as scheduled. While riders enjoy their trip, we'll take a quick moment to show you where Route 7 On Demand can take you. It can pick you up anywhere in this service area for $6 per round trip, or it can take you from bus stop to bus stop for $3 per round trip. With the help of TripLink and Coast, Gabe and Leslie were able to make it to where they needed to go. Transportation services are only one call or one click away with TripLink.
And all it took was a quick phone call.
It's really that easy.
To learn more or apply for services, visit communityrides.org or call TripLink at 603-834-6010 today. The Exeter Police Department and other community groups held a successful National Night Out event last week. Here's our recap.
National Night Out returned on August 6 in Townhouse Common, with lots of fun to be had by all of Exeter's residents, as well as the Exeter Police Department. Events such as live music performed by two of us, face painting, and even a dunk tank splashing volunteers into the water down below. Both children and adults alike were able to enjoy themselves to all of the different happenings that went on in the night, allowing Exeter to strengthen its relationship between its community and the police. Hopefully, next year is even better than this one. We'll simply have to just wait and see.
The Secretary of the State's Office is launching a new program aimed at honoring our nation's veterans on Election Day. Gabe Perez spoke with two people involved with the program to learn more. There's a new program being launched by the New Hampshire Secretary of State's Office this year. The program gives New Hampshire voters the opportunity to recognize the veterans and service members in their lives who protect our most precious freedom, the right to vote. We spoke to Senior Deputy Secretary of State Patricia Lovejoy to learn more about the program.
As a Secretary of State, we're probably a little bit prejudiced as to what we think is the greatest right that Americans have, and the right to vote. To us, that obviously is extremely important. And the reason we have the right to vote is because of all the veterans for the last few hundred years who have fought to keep that right.
Voters participating in the program will receive a lapel pin to wear on Election Day to highlight the service member or veteran that they're voting in honor of. The pin was designed by Navy veteran Jacob Aldridge. Originally from Virginia, Mr. Aldridge joined the Navy after graduating high school in 2010. Following his service as an auxiliary technician aboard the USS Cheyenne, he joined the USS New Hampshire. After a decade of service in the Navy, he worked as an engineering tech at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard.
When I was designing the pin, I really wanted to incorporate a lot of the historical reference material from a lot of the seals and the flags that we have in the state. We kind of came up with the idea of incorporating the man on the mountain, and we used one of the seals that we have in the state flag around the edge, and the state of New Hampshire kind of superimposed over it and ended up looking pretty good.
To participate in the program and receive your own pin, head to the Secretary of State's website at sos.nh.gov and sign up by giving them the name of the veteran or service member you are voting in honor of, and a short testimonial on what their service means to you. In return, the Secretary of State's Office will mail you a Vote in Honor of a Veteran lapel pin to wear on Election Day.
It feels good to help the community, because sometimes veterans feel a little bit under the radar, or they kind of feel misrepresented, or kind of overlooked, and I kind of, I would like that we can represent them through this, through something that I like to do.
I mean, I have a brother who served, I have an uncle, like I said, my father-in-law, that emotional connection to voting. And when you see what's going on in the world, in many places, people don't have the right to vote, that how important it is, and our veterans are the ones that gave it to us, that have maintained that right for us to vote. So it's quite a measure of pride. I mean, I will be wearing mine, I'll be working at the polls on each election day, and I will proudly wear my pin each day.
For more information, visit sos.nh.gov or visit the link in the description of this video. And now, an update from the Exeter Public Library.
Hi, everyone, it's Condra from the library, here with some updates. We are so excited to be launching a Pinochle group starting Monday, September 9 at 5:30, and they will be meeting every single Monday. We are also very excited to be hosting a Fall Craft Fair on Saturday, September 14 from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. Come on by to check out a lot of great local artisans. Learn about dementia and Alzheimer's in a Communicating Effectively Program presented by the Alzheimer's Association on Tuesday, September 17 at 6 p.m. Registration is required, so please call the library to register. Join in to learn about mental health and law on Wednesday, September 18 at 6 p.m. In honor of Band Book Week, we are going to be hosting a Band Book Book Club for adults on Monday, September 23 at 6 p.m. Art for Everyone is a program for adults to learn some basic arts skills. We will be having that on Tuesday, September 24 at 6 p.m. Learn about historic lighthouses and keepers of New Hampshire and Southern Maine, presented by historian Jeremy de Tremont, on Thursday, September 26 at 6 p.m. The children's clubs will be getting their signup in September. Call the library or stop by the children's room to ask about registration and information about storytime and open art. The teen scene is going to be having a lot of fun this fall, with all-day gaming on Mondays and Wednesdays, Teen Tuesdays from 3:00 to 4:00 on Tuesdays, and new to the program, refreshing Fridays from 3:00 to 4:00 on Fridays, where teens can enjoy a fun and refreshing drink. We hope to see you soon at the library for lots of fun.
And for our last segment, we have a message from Exeter Fine Crafts about an upcoming event celebrating Exeter's crafts.
Exeter Fine Crafts has an exciting event that you won't want to miss. Follow me and I'll show you. Since 1966, Exeter Fine Crafts has been a showcase for our local wood, jewelry, pottery, prints, and glass craftsmen. But did you know that cooks are craftsmen, too? That's right. If you're a cook, you're a craftsman. And on Thursday, September 26 at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Exeter Fine Crafts is hosting four of our favorite downtown Exeter culinary craftsmen. And because these are all Italian culinary craftsmen, who better to present our recognition awards than the star of the longest-running cooking show on television, author of 14 cookbooks, and founder of the Marian Esposito Foundation, Marian Esposito? And it's all happening right here, at Mila. Our guests will be treated to great apps prepared by each of the chefs, and they'll enjoy the new Chow Cecilia Lemon Cream Ale, especially prepared from Marian Esposito by the czar of the czar's brewing company himself. Guests will also receive an Exeter Fine Crafts gift bag filled with Marian's new book and lots of other goodies. Marian Esposito will present Exeter Fine Crafts awards to each of our chefs, and your admission will help benefit Exeter Fine Crafts' education program and the Marian Esposito Foundation to benefit aspiring chefs. And Marian will even present a $1,000 donation to the Exeter Seco School of Technology Culinary Program. Mark the date on your calendar, Thursday, September 26, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Henry, I'm sure the guests at the Exeter Fine Crafts Culinary Craftsmen's Event will love your new Chow Cecilia Lemon Cream Ale.
So I hope you join us as Exeter Fine Crafts celebrates Exeter's culinary craftsman on September 26 at Mila. I'll bring the beer.
For more information on this event, you can visit Exeter Fine Crafts' website at exeterfinecrafts.com, and you can visit Marian Esposito's website at chowitalia.com.
That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. And head over to the town website and subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on August 30 for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Bob Glawacki, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a good weekend, Exeter. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, the board is back from two board interviews conducted down in the Wheelwright Room. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, and certainly those that are watching at home. I'd like to introduce the board. Welcome to the August 19, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The year is going by very quickly. To my right are Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left are Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
We also have our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, here offline. Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. Welcome. We conducted our board interviews, so the next item on the agenda this evening is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come forward with any comment. We do ask, though, if your comments are regarding anything on the agenda that you wait till the agenda item come up. So I'll pause for a moment. And there is nobody online, so we'll move on for a public comment. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening, so we'll jump right to the approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was August 5. Ask the board first if there are any amendments or revisions.
None.
Okay. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of August 5, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 4-0. I should mention this evening, there'll be four of the board members here, Selectman Dan Chartren had an unexpected, unavoidable conflict, so Joanna would be four voting this evening. Okay, no appointments or resignations to take up this evening, so we'll jump right into our discussion items. And our first discussion item is very exciting. We have an Eagle Scout, James Haney, this evening, who's here, and he has a proposal, a very exciting proposal, for a flag drop box. And James, you can either come to the table or the podium, your choice, and if you want to introduce your project to us, that'd be great.
I have some handouts for you guys.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And James, I know you brought some guests with you. If you want to introduce them, too, that's great.
So this is my Eagle Scout coach, Mr. Louis. This is my dad, my sister, and my mom.
Welcome, nice to meet you.
So my name is James Haney. I'm with Troop 323 here in Exeter, and I'm going into EHS this year. And my Eagle Scout project is a flag retirement box. It's going to be made from an old US mailbox. And the reason I chose this for my project is because I want all the flags in the Exeter area to be able to be properly disposed of and burned like they should be, not just be tossed away, which isn't the right way to get rid of them. And I'd like to put the box in Gale Park, because it's a war memorial park, and it fits the theme of my project, and it's a very highly visible place for the box, so we can get more flags for the troop to be properly, so we can properly dispose of them.
Terrific. I like the idea.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I do, if, okay, so nice to meet you, James. I'm so excited about your project. I've only seen one of these boxes once, and it was in Portsmouth, tucked away off of Borthwick Ave. So I think you've thought this through really well. One suggestion I'd like to ask if you consider is for the location. So I understand you're wanting to put that in Gale Park, but did you consider possibly putting it in front of our town office building?
I actually did consider that. You know the bikerack that's out there?
Yes.
We were moving it probably from this way to the left, somewhere over there.
Yes.
That was my secondary pick.
Okay, because we do have the war, we have a memorial on the other side of the lawn, and I just think there's going to be construction in that area, there's a sidewalk, a crosswalk right there.
Yes.
And as far as convenience for people... And as far as convenience for people, they'd be coming to town, shopping, doing, having dinner, coming to the town office to register their dogs and their cars and any other town business. So are you open to that as being a location?
Yes, that'd be perfect.
I had the same idea. Thank you for bringing this to us. It's a great idea. I have a couple of flags waiting to be disposed of properly, and I know that the scouts have taken care of that in the past, but I've never... It's never really been advertised well, so that's why I still have a couple of flags waiting to go. But I agree with putting it out in front here because one of the first things that I was asked to do as a selectman was to change the service memorial out front to include all armed services, including the Merchant Marines, who hadn't been included on there. So I think it's really appropriate to put it nearby where we're celebrating all of the armed services that we have. So if you're open to moving it, relocating it here, I think that's a more prominent and easy, accessible place to do it.
Yes, that sounds great. It sounds like a great location.
Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have any question. I mean, I am open to wherever, you know, sort of best makes sense to have a location like that. I know that this is a sorely needed program in town. I hear, you know, often... Occasionally, not often. Sometimes I hear, you know, so-and-so's flag doesn't look good, and blah, 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 and it's not being displayed properly. And I do think that that is one of those things that is, you know, we have to honor and respect all of the flags. And so... And I also just don't think it's... It's not part of the culture anymore of like, understanding how to proper... Like, what is flag etiquette and why is there flag etiquette? So I do think that that's such an important part. The only thing that I will, you know, I'm eager to see additional, you know, box designs. I think that that's so fun, that you get to do that, and I think that that's really... I just think that that's really great. I will say, oftentimes when I have heard from community members, you know, sort of like, low-key is maybe a little bit better than bright and flashy, especially as we're, you know, thinking through what makes sense and what holds with the character of the town. Those would be my comments, but thank you so much.
Thank you for the suggestions.
Thank you for the support, for your parents and your family, and the scoutmaster. It's really exciting to have this kind of opportunity.
Great, thank you.
I have two other...
Please.
Questions that occurred to me as Selectwoman Cowan was speaking. Is there going to be any place on the box that will inform people why it's more appropriate to not just toss your flag in the trash or help see or, you know, what... Why we honor our flags this way?
Yeah. I did not plan on putting that, but I think that actually would be a good idea so we can inform the people of why and kind of teach them, well, they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, just something succinct and, you know, doesn't have to be a big...
Of course, yeah.
And there... Right, and there are proper ways to display the flag. You know, all of those kind of things.
And can I throw one more thought?
Of course.
Maybe when this is done, I don't know what the next step would be as far as where it would be located or how to get it there, but maybe do an educational thing as part of your... I am with Exeter TV.
That'd be a good idea.
Right, something like that.
Just say that.
So, see, we're all thinking on the same levels here. Good for you. Congratulations on coming up with this project.
So James, thank you. This is a really good idea, and I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues have said because I agree with everything. And I want to thank you for being open to considering the location outside of town office because I think it's going to be actually more convenient for folks to be able to drop off their flags, and I think it's actually going to be safer too because of how... Where Gale Park is. So first of all, thank you for that. And I do agree with Selectwoman Belanger. Exeter TV does a wonderful job. They do a biweekly newsletter, and once you get this going, we can put you in touch. They'll probably contact you themselves, but we'll put you in touch. And I think just doing something for their newsletter and then maybe doing something for Exeter TV to educate folks would be really useful. Can you speak to the different designs? And I think there's some collaboration with some other organizations too, if you want to speak to that.
Yes, so the picture that's on there, that's a rough idea I got from the internet of what it would look like, but I'm working with a local artist that she can help get us designs and help us with the painting of the flag.
Okay, great. Awesome. And did you want to just mention some of the other organizations that you're collaborating with throughout the process, or?
Yeah, the Knights, the Knights of Columbus.
Perfect. Thank you. All right.
So Mr. Chair, could I just ask about the next step? So your final choice of design, how would we process that and like, making sure? Because I think the slab is a good place for it out front. I was thinking the grasp, but I guess it really should be sitting on the slab, right? So we'd have to either move the bench that's there or the bike rack, or maybe somebody can come up with a better way of doing that. But I didn't know what the next step would be.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and I was going to look to the town manager. Maybe I shouldn't do this, but I was going to actually volunteer the public works to help Mr. Haney and his group.
Yeah, I think DPW would be the stop we would make internally so we could recommend that staff get involved and support the project and see what we can do.
Okay.
Great.
And do you need a formal motion to authorize this?
I think a motion would be in order for this, yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Haney before we?
No.
And James, do you have anything else you'd like to add, or?
No, thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Open that up. Okay, and we'll take a stab at a motion here. And it's Eagle... I want to make sure I get this right, James. It's Eagle Scout Troop 323?
Yes.
323 or 323?
323.
323?
Yeah, however you want to pronounce it.
Oh, and I just wanted to say too, I like the idea of an annual ceremony. That's... I know that was also in your memo. So I would entertain a motion to authorize Eagle Scout Troop 323 to work with town staff to develop a spot at the property in the front of town office for the Eagle Scout flag box for the citizens of Town of Exeter.
Do we want to add something in there about the design to make sure the final design is... Do we need to do anything, like approve that, or?
I can bring it back to you guys and get your approval if you'd like that.
That would be great.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Can you read that back to me, please? Nope. All right. And I'm going to start over, if I may. I would entertain a motion to authorize Eagle Scout Troop 323 to work with town staff to place a flag box on the property in front of town office for the purpose... For the citizens of the Town of Exeter, and further that representative from Eagle Scout Troop 323 will come back to the Select Board as part of the authorization with the final box design.
I will move that.
You can...
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, James.
Could I get your signature so I can bring it to the Eagle Board?
Uh-huh. Is that all right, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Come up to the microphone.
This is the microphone.
Yep, and just state your name and address for the record.
Judy Lamphier, Greenleaf Drive in Exeter. I just wondered what happens with flags, say, the container is full, but...
So we're going to at least empty it once. However, if it gets full, and here that will go and empty it and store it, but the first year it's going to kind of be figuring out what times it gets full, and after that we kind of base it off and just check it probably every month or something.
Uh-huh. Good.
For my true community.
Yeah. But then what's the final disposal?
We're going to push it burning with the partnership of the Knights of Columbus to probably dispose of it. We'll be open to the public as well, is what I believe they agree on.
Good question. Thank you, James. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you need something signed?
Yes.
Let's see. No, I'm just trying to figure out who signs it.
And where.
Do you need all of our signatures or just the...
The beneficiary, so whoever would be the representative of the town, so it would be their Mr. Dean or you.
You want to wrestle?
Depending on business-wise.
So James, maybe when you come back, you can talk about... Maybe more about when you might like, definitely be checking it or the troop will and things? Good time to follow up on that.
Here you go.
There you go.
Welcome.
James, thank you, and thank you to your troop. You did an excellent job presenting. The memo to the packet was very informative. Thank you for bringing your family along, and good luck this year in school. All right, thanks. Of course, we'll see you back soon.
Well done.
Okay, well done. Okay. Forgive me, that was so well done, I lost my agenda for a moment.
Who's in charge here?
Well, I was going to say, I was going to say our own Henry Blake down there with the signature. So our next discussion item is a follow-up to our conversation about the revaluations that we had earlier this summer with MRI and our Finance Director. And based on conversations that I've had with constituents, emails that we've received, and I know you folks have received calls and questions. Early last week, I had a conversation with the executive team, which consists of our town manager, our Assistant Town Manager, and our Finance Director, and I asked them to put together a video that we are going to debut this evening for you. We are going to put this on our website, on our Facebook page. It will be on the Exeter Newsletter, I believe, when the next one comes out, and any other appropriate social media that the executive team comes up with. It's a very quick, five-minute video, but I think it answers folks' questions and certainly explains the process. And with that, I will...
We just got to dim the light, so everyone should still be able to see if you need to leave the room, but...
Hello, I'm Nico Papakosinides, Chair of the Exeter Select Board. I'm joined today by Rustine, our Town Manager, and Corey Stevens, the Finance Director. We understand that many of you have questions regarding the mandated revaluation process. Our goal in making this video today is to explain the revaluation process and how it affects your property and your taxes.
The state of New Hampshire requires municipalities like Exeter to reevaluate all properties in the town at least every five years. The goal of the revaluation is to ensure that all property values are as close as possible to fair market value and that all property owners pay their proportional fair share of property taxes.
So what is the impact of this year's revaluation on you as an Exeter taxpayer? By now, I'm sure you've received a letter from the town informing you of your property's new value. If you're like me, the revale amount in the letter was remarkably higher than the value before the revale, and no doubt this is causing many of you concern. How do you interpret your new value? What does it mean for your property tax bill going forward? Something to keep in mind is that the revaluation process does not allow the town to collect any more in taxes than was appropriated by voters during the March vote. This is an important fact. Our property tax bill is calculated by multiplying the tax rate by the property value per thousand, which equals our tax bill. The sum of all of our tax bills equals the amount the town has to spend, which is equivalent to what the voters approved in March. When the value of our properties increases during a revaluation, the tax rate has to fall so that the town only collects what voters appropriated for spending during the March vote. So all things being equal, let's say the town budget didn't increase year over year, and everyone's property increased in value by the same percentage. In this scenario, taxpayers would not see an increase in their December tax bill. Now, the reality in Exeter is that not all properties increased in value by the same percentage as a result of the revaluation. As you can see from this graphic, which shows the results of Exeter's revaluation, the percentage change in property values varies widely among property types. At this point in the year, it's still too early to determine Exeter's new tax rate and therefore your December tax bill. The state, through the Department of Revenue, will set the new tax rate in October or November as part of its annual tax rate set in process. However, as explained earlier, we can say that the tax rate will go down to compensate for the increase in property values. If you look at the graphics showing the change in value among different property types, you can use it to get a general sense of whether your tax bill will increase, decrease, or roughly stay the same come December due to the revaluation. Overall, we see that the change in property value as a result of the revaluation was 61%. With that in mind, if you calculate the percentage change in value for your own property and compare it to the overall change of 61%, you can roughly determine that based on the revaluation, if your percentage increase was equal to 61%, there would be no change to your taxes as a result of the revaluation. If your percentage increase was greater than 61%, there would likely be an increase to your taxes as a result of the revaluation. And if your percentage change was less than 61%, there may be a decrease to your taxes as a result of the revaluation. During a revaluation, the proportion of taxes that each of us contributes towards the town's annual spending is reallocated. For example, maybe your property was already close to fair market value before the revale, and the change was only 30%, while my value changed by 70%. In this scenario, I would experience an increase in my property tax bill as a result of the revaluation, while yours would decrease.
As you review your valuation letter, please consider the following two important points. First, do not multiply last year's tax rate by your new valuation amount. The result will not be your new tax amount. In fact, the letter taxpayers receive specifically cautions against doing this. Second, the percentage increase in your property value does not equate to the percentage by which your tax bill will rise. In other words, a 50% increase in value does not mean a 50% increase in taxes. Another thing to keep in mind is that the tax rate is made up of several different components in addition to the local municipal rate. Those include school, county, and state education tax rates.
To better understand the change in your own property value, we encourage you to contact our revaluation contractor, MRI. They are best suited to explain the data supporting your property value change. Appointments can be scheduled online from the town website or by phone at 603-279-0351 extension 404. The team is available Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This year, the deadline to request an informal hearing is August 26th. If you cannot attend a hearing, you can submit information in writing regarding your property before August 27 via email to assessing@mri.gov.com or by mail to the Town of Exeter Assessor's Office, 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. Thank you for watching, and we hope this video helped explain this very complicated process. Great, thank you. And that will hit the airwaves tomorrow?
Yes, that'll be up and running tomorrow.
Town website?
Yes, town website.
Town Facebook page?
Facebook page, we'll put it out on social media so people can see it there as well.
Okay. And then Exeter TV can take it.
And YouTube as well. Our YouTube presence.
Great. Like to thank the executive team for putting this together on very short notice, and also want to thank the team, Bob and Gabe at Exeter TV, that really turned this around incredibly quickly at the end of last week, so kudos. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just add?
Sure.
Really briefly, I'll second what you just said, but also it's been a goal of the town to be... Try to find better ways to communicate, as I'm stumbling over what I'm trying to say. And this is just something that makes me so proud to see this come together. It is a difficult thing for people to understand, so thank everyone who was part of this project, and Mr. Chair, you too. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, moving forward, we're going to discuss the Comcast franchise amendment, and with us this evening from our Council DTC is Attorney Kate Miller. Good evening.
Hello, nice to see you. That was a great presentation by the Eagle Scout. I'm glad I didn't have to follow him. It's much better to come after taxes. So you're probably saying, are we still talking about the Comcast franchise renewal? Well, yes, we are. We've been trying for a couple of years to get Comcast to work with us to give the town a higher definition channel for our local access TV. Most of cable TV is now in much crisper, high-definition, and the local channels look different and not as nice, so the goal has been to try to move that along. Comcast has been... Comcast has been sort of slow to come around to that and they finally have. So we've got an amendment to the current franchise that brings in that, which was our major goal in trying to update the franchise agreement. There are a few other changes in the law that we've incorporated into the amendment to try to bring things up to date to reflect those, which are not as important as what we're trying to achieve there with that high-definition channel. So I submitted a little memo that described the information and a copy of the amendment, which Comcast has approved. If the board is on board with this, then the next step would be to schedule a public hearing for one more opportunity for people to be able to talk about this. It's important to remember that some of the things that people get most frustrated with are not something that we can negotiate on. So the prices, the channel selections, the way things are packaged in tiers is not something the town has any control over. We also don't control the fact that there's only one cable TV company in town. We are open to other cable TV companies choosing to do business here, but so far, no others have offered to do so. As a practical reality, a lot of folks are dropping their cable packages and moving to internet services for streaming to get their video content. The proposal here would add an additional 10 years to Comcast's franchise agreement from the time it's executed going forward, which would mean that Comcast couldn't walk away from that contract during those 10 years. We expect that eventually the cable companies will look to shed their responsibilities as cable companies, getting franchise agreements, paying franchise fees and all that. And if we have a 10-year agreement, we know that Comcast will be providing services that people still subscribe to for at least those 10 years. So that's a nutshell.
Thank you. One public hearing is required?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Dean, in terms of timeline, I know you need to post that in 14 days, understanding we have three meetings in September, is there a preferable date?
We'd like to do it on September 16th if that would be amenable to everybody.
That's good.
For everybody here?
Yeah.
Are there any questions for Attorney Miller this time?
I have none for Attorney Miller, other than thank you for working on this. I have a bunch of questions, but I think those can wait.
Okay.
I did have a question that was about some federal legislation, but I think you answered it by saying we're tied, they're tied to us for 10 years, no matter what.
Correct, yes.
Any questions? Mr. Dean, do you want a formal motion for the hearing?
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
There are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing to discuss the proposed amendment to the Comcast cable TV franchise renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, now I thought of a question.
You want to ask it?
Yeah, I just have one question that I should have asked you, Ms. Miller, before you walked away. The list on Exhibit A of where the cable drops are?
Yes.
Parks and Rec is still listed at 32 Court Street, can we change that to 4 Hampton Road at some point?
So I looked at the website and the website lists it as Court Street still. So that's why I kept it. And I don't know, I know they're in the process of moving, have they actually completed the move?
No, I just wondered if.
Oh, so that will include, I think there's a footnote that says it includes any, you know, new properties that come into service, so those can be added. It's not a list that cannot be added to during the course of the 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And there'll be a new police and fire.
Public safety cop list, that's right, that's right.
I thought of that as well, yes. Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Miller?
None.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, our next agenda item is from the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, a very exciting agenda item, and I'm very happy to see so many people here this evening. So we give the floor to David Tovey? I think? You had a couple of things to talk about regarding this one topic, so.
Yes.
We're going to, if the board would indulge, later on in our agenda, there's an approval that he needs for a grant that ties into this discussion item. If we could just take that all up now, that would be wonderful. And I would note, under correspondence, there is a very, very nice email from Leslie Haslam that I responded to this weekend, and that's regarding this as well, and that's in our packet under correspondence. So with that, Mr. Tovey, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good to have you back.
So as you all saw in the memo I sent, I won't read it word for word, but I'll give a brief recap of it, if I may. So the Exeter Senior Council, which consists of five residents, some of them are here tonight and I believe have a little speech-prepared presentation afterwards, but we wanted to give a recap on some of the work we've been doing. So as you know, we've been talking about the Senior Resource Guide quite a bit. That was one of the main topics that we saw in an age-friendly community survey that was conducted by Park and Rec and Rockingham Planning Commission back in 2022. And we continue to refine that resource guide and work on other areas of livability to make Exeter a more age-friendly community. So aside from that resource guide, we meet monthly and we talk about things like programming, events, alternative funding to address these areas and programs and all of that, social opportunities, ways to get the information out to older adults, and just overall ways to make Exeter a more age-friendly community. So we're here tonight to just give a quick update. We've been meeting monthly. One of the things we've been working on, or one of the things the council helped us receive was a grant from Exeter Hospital Community Funding Grant, which is a $30,000 grant for senior programming. So we're very excited to be awarded that. We are going to be signing the agreement this week and sending it back to Exeter Hospital. So we wanted to give an update on that excellent news as well. And with that grant, we have a lot of exciting things coming up, some new programs, monthly luncheons, more health and wellness programs. We have a Senior Resource Fair on October 22nd. We're going to be announcing a lot of this this week through our website and our social media and email and all the channels we have for communication. So if the board has any questions for me, I'm going to go over to the podium and I'll allow any of the council members, if they want to come up here or wherever they feel comfortable, but I'll make sure I stick around too to help answer any questions if needed.
Terrific, thank you.
So if you want to come up one at a time, however you like.
I'll sit, I just had surgery, so.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I'll introduce myself, my name is Joan Sauvay, I live at Sterling Hill. I've lived in Exeter for, since 2015. And the one thing that I have noticed in, in this particular town is we have a problem with transportation, especially for seniors. And so I just wanted to speak a little bit about what happens when they don't have transportation. We all know how people get lonely and how they sort of turn inside themselves and don't have any activities. And I want you to think for a minute about a senior going to see a doctor and the doctor saying, "I don't think you should drive anymore." Or a person with mobility issues saying, "I don't think you should get in a car and drive anymore." They lose their license, but they also lose their independence. And that independence is extremely valuable. We all know, when you want to go to CVS, you hop in the car and you go to CVS. You want to pick something up at Market Basket, you hop in the car and you do that. So transportation and a mobility van for Parks and Rec is a wonderful, wonderful thing to think about and to actually work on because it will give us seating, plus it'll give us the, give a person the ability to be raised up into the van without any steps. It'll also give us three handicap seats in the back of the van that we can accommodate handicap wheelchairs. So all of that is great for the seniors when we want to go to whatever David plans. But it will also, will be good because when we're not using it, that van will be available to children who are disabled in our town. And they will be able to use that to go to camp, they'll be able to use it to go to soccer, they'll be able to use it to go to PT, whatever, whatever. So the van actually takes care of two very large pieces of our community, very large and needy pieces of our community. So I just want you to think about losing your license and then having to be dependent on somebody else to help you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to read mine.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Phyllis Lanning and I live at 6 Speeding Place Drive in a 62-plus building. And I'd just like to thank everybody for taking these few moments to listen to us. And I'm here to update you on what we're doing as a senior council member. We're looking, what's important for us right now is to get a part-time person for the department. They put a tremendous amount of energy into having activities for the seniors. And we go to all these places and each one of those activities takes a tremendous amount of time for them to find the place, to book the place, to get everybody together, to drive us there, stay with us, go to lunch afterwards. And so that takes away their time if they have to do that. So without that person there, it's very restrictive for them. So to start with a part-time person that hopefully would flow into a full-time person, especially when we move to the new property, they would be able to be there all the time, welcoming in the seniors, letting them know the information, letting them know what's available to them and how to go about, I don't know, make an appointment to go on one of the trips or whatever. I looked up the stats and it said that in Exeter, we have 8,500 people. I'm not sure if that's up to date or not. But from that, it said that 2,000 of those were senior people and that came from a world population review. So think about that, 2,000 of the 8,000 are seniors in need to get out of where they're living, the isolation, the restrictions that she was talking about. And so the Park and Rec has stepped forward and given us the ability to go on these wonderful trips, to go to chair yoga, to do all of these things. I can't even tell you how proud we are to have this in our town. We're lucky, we're fortunate. And if you could really think about resourcing the money, the funds to have that part-time come on board and hopefully next year, change it over into a full-time, where we move into our new property, so somebody would be there all the time to welcome us in. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara DeJardin and I live on Burkside Drive in Exeter. And I've lived in Exeter for 27 years. And I'm also a member of the Exeter Senior Council and very proud to be on that council because I'm one of those, we're all, we're all seniors on that council. And we want to do what's going to be best for all the seniors in Exeter, whether, whether they have mobility issues, whether they have hearing issues, no matter what the issues are, so that everybody's going to be included. And I think, backing what Phyllis just said, talking about having a part-time person to begin doing actual programs inside the senior center so that people have something to do every single day, you know, no matter, no matter what it is, things from arts and crafts to all kinds of different programs you can have. And I kind of went over to the Portsmouth Senior Center to take a peek at what they have, and I was so shocked because, my gracious, that place was full. And they had something going all of the time, from the trips that David, you know, puts together to movies on such and such a day, to a guest speaker on diabetes or wellness. It was absolutely fantastic. And I also peeked over at Hampton because I do play, I'm a senior, but I'm an active senior, and I still play tennis. And so after tennis, I went to the Hampton Rec Department because that's right where, right at Tuck Field. And I looked at what they have, and they have ping pong and they have, they have counter dancing and they have something going. They even have, I think it's violin lessons, fiddle, instead of ukulele lessons, you can have a ukulele lesson if you want, but they have something going all the time for the seniors. And Newmarket, Newmarket was incredible. I couldn't believe all the, I said, this is a place to come. And I'm thinking of Exeter now and, you know, with the, with the limited funds and, you know, you can't expect some person, people, they're already limited in their staff, to be able to do all kinds of programs for youth and other people and offer the trips and the kayaking and all of that and really be able to fit in real, you know, programs of interest to the seniors. And I'm just hoping that you'll, you'll be, you'll consider having a part-time person to start. I'd really like to say a full-time person to start, but I won't push it because we don't have anything to start, but we have to start slow, I understand. And to be able to offer all these things that I think Exeter right now is, is really missing. And I hope if any of you have time, and I know most of you are probably still working and I don't think you're all retired yet, to pop in at one of those programs, anytime at all, and, and just have a, have a look at what they have for the seniors. I mean, it's, it's really wonderful when you think of it because it's nice to know as we get older that we'll be able to go somewhere during the day and not stay in our homes, you know? I mean, my day is going to be coming, I know, pretty soon they'll be telling me I, I can't drive or I have to walk everywhere and I'll be wishing that I had a place to go during the day instead of sitting home and feeling sorry for myself. But anyway, that's about all I have to say. Anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank you for going to the other towns, not just Portsmouth, but the other ones, it's so important because of different sizes, different population sizes. So thank you for adding that in, in your comments.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
Like I'm in school, I was a teacher.
Welcome.
My name is Ann King, I live at 20 Chestnut Street and moved here from upstate New York less than five years ago. My husband has a lot of mobility issues and it's gotten worse since he's been here. He relies and depends heavily on the senior center. He's a vibrant person, but he needs social, emotional, intellectual interaction. The senior center provides that and it's maximum less than two hours a day, two days a week. And I just would appeal to being able to increase that for everybody's benefit. It's a wonderful resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? As part of the grant, I believe that having a part-time position was one of the criteria, is that correct?
Correct.
And knowing you and Mr. Beeson, I'm sure you're, you've already thought of ways that we're going to introduce this during the budget season to make sure that we can abide by the terms of the grant, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And I did want to mention too, in my other memo about the grant, I did mention that this person would work 32 hours per week and that is incorrect, it would be 29. It would be 29 hours per week. So there would be, just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that. So we may need to tweak that a little bit.
Is it still at 30 weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And just a quick question, you may not even have an answer, and that's okay if you don't. But have you and Mr. Bisson and the executive team talked about what it would take to get a van that was described earlier? And what that might cost?
Yep, yes. I know Greg's been researching wheelchair-accessible vans and has a few different options, and has been working with Corey too, and he could definitely, you know, answer a little bit more in detail. But there's, there's new, there's used with limited miles. Again, looking at other ways to fund the van, where we're looking at all different options.
Okay. Good, because while, while you were speaking about the van, I was thinking about some possible ways that we might be able to fund that without, you know, a warrant article. I think creatively, maybe we could talk about that.
Great.
If not this year, the next, but I, I'm already thinking of some ways that
Please do tell.
That we could go about doing that. I'd like to talk with the finance director offline too, because I think that that's a very important piece to this.
Well, yeah, so not part of the grant.
No, 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 the whole moving forward with this, right.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Because, look, you know, 10 Hampton Road will be functional, hopefully sooner.
Yes.
And before I open up for questions, I just want to say I'm appreciative of all of the input that, that she gave us this evening. I, and I don't usually talk about myself, my personal life, but I grew up in a very large, close, multi-generational family, and I grew up with, with all generations of my family, some who were very mobile, some who were not, some who had to give up their licenses along the time I was growing up. And I also know how important it is for, for seniors to be around young kids, because that just, it benefits seniors, and it benefits the young kids. And that's why when I first ran in 2019, one of my platforms was seniors. The pandemic unfortunately got in the way, and trying to find a common ground that we could all agree on in terms of coming up with a community center, finally, when 10 Hampton Road became available, we're making our way, and that excites me. And I know it's moving slowly, but we're getting there, and we're almost around the corner. And I know when you talk about 10 Hampton Road in a minute, that's going to be very exciting. So I'm asking these questions about the van because I think that's a vital part, and understanding the limited resources that we have and commitments, if we can find other ways, and I've got some ideas. Corey, you and I will talk, and maybe at a next meeting, we can talk about that. But I just want to thank you all for coming out here. And David, I want to thank you because I know you've been incredibly, incredibly instrumental in increasing the programming and really working with our residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Happy, happy to help.
Select woman will enter.
So thank you so much. Just to see your faces when you say how proud you are to work on this council. It's so important that we hear directly from you. So thank you for being here tonight and, and being willing to sit there and talk publicly and, and share your thoughts and what you find. And yes, things move kind of slow sometimes, but we keep chugging in the right direction, I think. And it is important for people to understand, I think all of us have dealt with a parent at one time or another, or an aunt, or someone who was at that point where they just didn't have that mobility, and where they couldn't get in their car and drive anymore, and we don't have great public transportation in Exeter or New Hampshire. So I, I just want to thank you for coming out and Dave for the work you're doing. It's so vital. It is, so thanks. One more thing on the grant, no, no match, right? No match on that grant?
No.
I always like to make sure people are reminded of that, so.
Yes, no, the town does have, yeah, no match for this grant. It's just a one-time $30,000 grant. We will spend the fund starting September of 2024, and spend, and spend the rest of them by September of 2025.
Okay, I'm just gonna, because I know, I'm gonna add a personal note. So I grew up here, I was born here. When I was a kid, growing up, we had three taxi services in town. There were cabs everywhere, and people had their own cars. So we don't have that anymore, and that's another vital part that we have been missing for a long time. So I'm glad we're taking steps to correct it ourselves.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Select woman Gilman, do you have any?
Yes, I was involved early on when we were getting together the senior activities manual, her book that, you know, provides all the information. We worked with the Rockingham Planning Commission and had a much wider group of, wasn't the council, I forget what we called it.
Yeah, they were organizations.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were representatives from different organizations, like TASK that provides ridership services. And I'm glad to see that the nucleus of that group has stuck together and are so energized. It's really great to see. And transportation has been our, our bugaboo forever. It's been the question all the time, talking to Coast or the Rockingham Planning Commission, which comes first, the service or the demand? And you can't, you can't keep the service if you don't have the demand. So getting to that demand point has been very difficult to judge or to ascertain, I guess. So I'm a big supporter of the van, and I think I give, I have a mission for the council as between now and the time that we, it all works out, that you have a proposal for how it's going to work. Is it a once-a-day run? Is it on-call? Is it, you know, I know it's, it'll be for special events and such, but there are people at home that don't have access to coming to see you or coming to talk to us. They can call or email, but, so just, you know, we've tossed out different ideas and, but it's all been limited by not having something to actually use. So I really appreciate you looking into that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have a question.
And we just need your name and address for the record, please.
Lynn Wallace. I've lived here for 43 years, and I'm just curious, because Barbara is one of my friends, and we communicate a lot about this subject, who will be driving the van?
That's what we, that's what we need to work on.
Because if it's, you know, just an occasional use, so it doesn't really make much sense to have someone full-time, ready to go, you know, to take someone somewhere. So that's, that's another thing besides the van itself.
Right, that's, that's what I was asking for the council to look at, is how, how will it function?
How much it would be used.
Right. Thank you, good point. Thanks. Select woman Cal?
No, I don't have any questions. I just feel this is such an important, you know, there's, there's such a loss of community, which makes me nervous and sad. And I do, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, about the connection between young folks and more seasoned folks. And so just really, you know, think that this is, this is such an important resource, and I'm more, I mean, I, I am interested in making sure that we have good, a good usage plan, and, you know, and the van is filled. But I also think, like, there is this part that if you help one person, then the whole thing is worth it, and want to really be responsive to the needs of the, of the community and listen to the people who are using this resource. So thank you so much for taking part of your Monday to come and, and see us. We never have this many people, usually, so feel free to come down. I know.
Smiling.
You said that.
Yeah, I said. So I said, I know, I said I wasn't going to say anything, and then I said a lot. But anyway, thank you very much for coming. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Dave, what action do you need from us? I know we're going to jump to the approval.
So for the grant, I, I guess a motion could be to authorize Corey Finance and Park and Rec to, well, so first, let me backtrack. The agreement for, for the grant has been sent over to Naomi, our legal counsel for the town, to review before we sign anything. So I guess I would just say to authorize us to sign and execute that.
Is this, we, have we accepted this, Mr. Dean? No, not yet. So you want a motion to accept the grant? Okay, understood, understood.
Do we want Naomi's review?
You, you could accept the grant subject to council review as to form.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the town of Exeter to accept the $30,000 grant for senior programming through Exeter Hospital Community Grant Funding, contingent on approval from council. The focus of the grant will include health, wellness, and fitness programs, monthly luncheons, trips, and a part-time senior coordinator.
So moved with thanks to the Exeter Hospital also. Second.
It's a motion, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I would also like to publicly thank Beth Israel Ahe Health and the Exeter Hospital Community Grant Funding, as select woman Belinda said. Motion, and a second, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. We will prepare a thank you letter as well, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dean. From the board. Thank you. Dave, I'm not sure you're done yet.
Yeah.
That one's so long. Yeah, just stay there. Go while you're going, right?
It's all right, Greg's coming out of the bullpen.
Well, I got to thank Mr. Tovey for actually doing this memo with Mr. Sharples, as I was on vacation last week, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board. We're writing this memorandum to go before you tonight, to authorize us to execute a contract with CHA Consulting for OPM services for the renovation of 10 Hampton Road. As you know, we recently appeared before you last meeting to approve a contract with HR Hampshire Development Corporation, HDC, as a construction manager for the project. During the negotiations with HDC, they recommended that we engage the services of owner-project manager, OPM, to act as the town representative to oversee and review monthly requisitions of completed work and other tasks to benefit the town. Although we do not need an OPM for the, to conduct the full services, we do believe it is our best interest to hire OPM to protect the town. The town recently went through extensive search review, looking for an OPM for the new police station slash fire substation, and awarded the contract to CHA Consulting. The renovation of 10 Hampton Roads are grant-funded with stipulation that the project is 100% completed by August 2025. Given the pressing timeframe for completion of the 10 Hampton Road, we request the select board to authorize the town manager to, to rely upon the recent selection process of the new police station and fire substation and enter into a contract with CHA Consulting for OPM and consulting services regarding 10 Hampton Road renovations. We have up to 35,000 funds within the budget for this purpose. We have discussed this with CHA, and they have had, they have time and are willing to be the owner-project manager on this project. And then, of course, we have a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract with CHA for the owner-project manager services for 10 Hampton Road, for not, and not to exceed 35,000.
Thank you, Mr. Bisson. Any questions for Greg or Dave?
No, just thank you for explaining the abbreviations.
I was thinking of it.
I know, and I just want to appreciate, and when I smile, it's because we're trying to communicate better, right? And it's, it's just good. So I just wanted to recognize that you
Yes.
Did that, and, and just to suggest that town manager or designate be
Yes, that's, that's
In the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Written in my motion here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager or his designate to negotiate and execute a contract with CHA for owner-project manager services for the renovations of 10 Hampton Road to not, for a price not to exceed $35,000.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries 4-0.
And, Mr. Chair, just to make the board aware, at one point, once we have everything finalized and a date set for the renovation to begin, we are going to be conducting a breaking ground, per se, with a golden sledgehammer
Great.
To put a hole in a wall, so that way we can market, CDFA, Community Development Finance Authority, really wants to document this in photos. So that's one of the first things they want to do, a celebration of it, and we'll be hanging a banner saying this is financed through Community Development Finance Authority. So they want to continuously do a lot of photo ops.
Good.
So will the board be invited to this?
You will be invited. That's why I want to make you aware, the date has not been set. I will coordinate with the executive team and the board.
You were ready to get your calendar out.
You know me well, I can't help it, I live by my calendar, too, so many things going on.
If any senior council members would like to take a swing with the hammer, too.
That's a wonderful idea.
That's a definite. That's a definite. If you'd like to hang out for a minute, if the board will indulge, there's one more item under permits and approvals, we'll let these gentlemen go home early.
Thank you.
Do you want to go over the permit real quick?
Yeah, I apologize for the late addition. I had filled it out weeks ago, meant to submit it. As you know, October 5th, the Powder Cag Beer and Chili Festival is coming back to Exeter, per your approval, obviously. The chiefs have signed off on it, obviously, and the health officer. And as you know, this is a big economic driver for the community, bringing in thousands of people for a one-day festival. And I feel that more and more businesses and organizations are organizing events around it. So it's a, it's a great event. It benefits the Parks and Rec and the Exeter Area Chamber of Commerce, bringing in a substantial amount of money for us as well as the community.
And it's a fun thing to volunteer at, if anyone is
And we are taking volunteers. Thank you, Nancy.
Greg, I'm going to ask solely, because I'm going to be with them tomorrow, the Swayze Park trustees, are they aware of?
They, they don't know the date, probably, but it's been on the calendar, so they're definitely aware. It's always the first Saturday of October.
Okay.
And just to let everyone know, as there, the Powder Cag actually generates a typical rental fee for Swayze Parkway is $250 per organization or something. We, we donate $2,000 towards, because we do heavy use thousands of people on the parkway, and we, we try to clean up as much as we can, and appreciate all the volunteers that come down and help us clean up afterwards.
Yeah, Greg, I don't think we've had any complaints about the cleanup from that event
No.
That I'm aware of.
Well, our staff in Public Works have done a great job in managing it.
There is a lot of people that start early in the day and are there way past the conclusion.
It's a good 12-hour day for us in Parks and Rec.
Any questions for Mr. Bisson? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the special event application for the Powder Cag Beer and Chili Festival for October 5th, 2024, start date 7:00 a.m., end date 8:00 p.m. at Swayze Parkway.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed.
You brought up my calendar, my purse is downstairs, I was trying to ask Melissa to go get it.
So to all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you, Dave. I stopped because I didn't
I'm so sorry. I know, I was trying to whisper it or mouth it.
Well, Russ was looking to me like I was trying to
No. I apologize, I didn't realize I did that until you mentioned me and pulling out my calendar. I was making sure of this. Chili Fest was in my calendar because I volunteer every year.
I'm going to be away that day.
Excuse me, we have to go. Everyone, thank you so much again.
Thank you for coming.
The Scout Project, hearing from you on your
Wonderful.
I'm so sorry to ask you that.
Thank you.
I disrupted it so much, I could have gone and got
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry
That's okay.
About that.
Thank you very much. Good night. Bye-bye, thank you.
Thank you.
James, take care. Nice to meet you.
Dave, look forward to seeing you come back.
Look forward to that, I'll be there.
Bye, Dave.
Good night, I'll see you guys Wednesday.
Okay, next on our discussion items, we have our assistant town manager, Melissa Roy, and our finance director, Corey Stevens, who are going to give us an update on the reorganization strategy. Russ, do you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again, Melissa.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing today?
Very good, thanks.
All right. So for those of you that don't remember, I know you, you as the board, remember, but for everybody at home, a little over a year ago, the board contracted with Keegan and Associates to review a bunch of different items within the town: succession planning, whether we were being efficient in our government practices, reorganization or organization of our departments, and a few other things. So we started that process. Mr. Keegan interviewed staff, worked with various departments, and sometime around January of this year, gave us a final report, which he came and presented to you folks. Since that time, the executive team of Russ, Corey, and myself have been working on taking some of the recommendations and implementing them that don't have cost values, and now we have some suggestions for some of the ones that do have cost implications. So just very quickly to say a few things that have already happened from this report. It was recommended that the welfare position, which was tied with the Senior Executive Assistant, be broken out into two positions. So as part of last year's budget process, that was approved, and we have a new welfare coordinator, Clarissa. She's fantastic, and that has given Pam, our Senior Executive Assistant to Russ, a much more bandwidth to be able to work on some projects with Russ. The other things that we have done, Russ has started weekly operations meetings, which we have all of our department heads on Zoom once a week as a weekly catch-up, which is really great. It's been quite effective. There is a group of six or seven department heads. We're recommending things that might have budgetary pieces to them. Part of the report said reorganization. We had a town manager who has had or has a significant amount of direct reports. There was a very linear structure. It was the town manager and everybody else. And so how was there a way to support the administration or the administrative team? And Bill Keegan's recommendation was to consolidate some of these departments and reorganize the reporting structure. So the first would be creating a land use department in which the town planner would become a land use director. The second department of concern was human resources, which is the role that I actually hold currently as the HR Director, and I'm also the Assistant Town Manager. There was a recommendation for that position to be split into two positions. The finance department currently was just overseeing the finance team, and there is a recommendation that the finance department oversee a few other departments, including tax and assessing. And all of those changes would then lead to the town manager's office, having less direct reports and therefore more time for strategic planning for the entire town. So we are looking to implement some of these goals or these reorganizational goals in Q4 of this year, sometime around October. We've already started the process of communicating with the staff that would be affected because we didn't want any of our staff to hear our recommendations here on a board meeting for the first time. So we've had conversations with anybody that could potentially be affected, let them ask questions, you know, have conversations. And I think we've got to the point where everybody sort of understands what we're proposing and is, for the most part, on board. We've started updating job descriptions. If you're changing reporting structure, we need to update who is doing what in their job description. So we've started that. And we've started reviewing other communities for similar positions. So now if the finance director is overseeing assessing, tax, IT, and the finance department, are there other communities that have somebody like that? Or if now we have an HR Director and an Assistant Town Manager, what does that look like? Or in planning's case, a land use director. So land use would combine planning, conservation, sustainability, economic development, and provide staff support to historic preservation. The new department lead would be Dave Sharples, and he would be in a new role called Land Use Director. At this time, we recommend leaving building inspections and code enforcement by itself. Right now, there are two offices work, they're intertwined in some of their roles, and right now, we think that leaving that alone is the right thing to do eventually when Doug decides to retire, which I know he has no intention of retiring, and nor do we want him to retire. But when he so makes that decision, that might be a time to have that discussion, but not right now. Bill's report recommended hiring a zoning administrator or a staff planner. I think the feeling amongst Ross, Corey, and myself and Dave is that that can wait a few years. Let's look and see what this reorganization does, and if there's still a need, which there may be, in a few years, we have that discussion again. I'll stop at land use so that you guys can ask any questions before I continue. Okay.
Like it so far.
All right. Human Resources and Assistant Town Manager, a few years ago, I was given the opportunity to try this dual role, and it's been a fantastic experience. However, it is a very crazy position. There's a lot for a single person to split time with, and the recommendation from the Keegan report says to have a standalone HR Director running the HR Department. And myself would then be moved into the assistant, a singular Assistant Town Manager role, working with Russ and the town manager's office. I would still oversee the HR Department, as well as I would take Parks and Recreation. I would oversee Parks and Recreation. I would oversee welfare and communications and EX TV. So again, this is going back and trying to pull out some of the direct reports so that the day-to-day operations can come through myself and Corey, and giving Russ a little bit more time to look at things from a bigger picture. Any question? So we would have to come back to you. We would be putting this in the 2025 budget as part of BRC for this new position. We have some salary ranges, but they haven't been firmed up, so we would need to come back as part of the BRC process and your budget process. Does anybody have any questions about the HR ATM? Continue on in finance. Through our recommendation, something that Mr. Keegan had noticed was that we had tax. We have a really unusual tax setup here due to a town warrant in the eighties. Yeah. So our tax collector is actually, Mr. Dean, is town manager. So our deputy tax collector actually functions pretty much like a tax collector. And so the recommendation was to take any department that had finance, financially based, and put it under the finance director and Corey. So that would move tax collecting, assessing, and this was like the gym or the IT, the not finance-related, but he has an affinity for it. So we talked about putting.
I did wonder about.
We talked about putting IT under Corey. So those would be what would happen under finance. Do you guys have any questions about that one?
Yeah, water and sewer billing and collections.
So water and sewer billing and collection still stays under DPW, but they work basically day-to-day with the tax office, and that will continue.
Just a quick note, collections is in the tax office. So we separated out billing and collections probably 12 years ago. I'd have to look, but we separated it out due to separation of duties under a finance report that we got. So we continued to do that. But Corey would have supervisory responsibility over the collection side.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about finance? All right. Moving on to town manager. Essentially, what those three departments, those large-scale changes do is, like I said, free up things for Mr. Dean. So it will reduce the number of direct reports, and it will, we now also have this welfare position pulled out of the town manager's office, and now standing alone on its own. So there was real concern about the bandwidth of the town manager's office, whether that was when someone was out on vacation or just in general. And all of these recommendations allow us to get to the point where it is more sustainable for a single person or a unit, as in the town manager's office or the E Team. And that's the biggest thing I would like to say thank you for, because bringing on Mr. Keegan allowed us to set up some processes, whether that's weekly ops meetings or E Team, and it's really been very, very nice. It's actually been really great. So sometimes we have too many meetings, but not those ones.
Once you get used to them, it's just, it's like going to lunch.
Yeah, it's really nice. I feel like since I've been here, and Ross is a huge part of this, we're all really working so well right now, and it's just great. So.
And I would echo that sentiment, and I'm blessed with a great executive team right here, and they do a fantastic job for the town, and I'm grateful for that, and hopefully we can continue to do great work.
I have a couple of thoughts, but I'll yield. Selectwoman Belanger?
I just want to say thank you. These were all the ones that I would like to have seen as priorities, so I'm happy to see that. But just that you guys are sticking with this, and we're moving forward at what I think is a good pace. I mean, this was, I was just looking at my notes, this was presented to us on February 12th of this year, and we've implemented things, and we're trying to be conscientious of the financial impacts of it. And I just want to thank you all for your approach to this, and that we're just moving forward because it's so important and so needed. So.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
I'll echo Selectwoman Belanger's thoughts that jumped right on this, and I have, I think had, I think this is a successful reorganization of the departments that work together or have similar duties. This is like totally not important, but one of the things that we might want to consider because we're combining what is now known as departments, do we want to make these three new things divisions? And you don't have to change the letterhead or anything like that.
That's a great question.
Just think about it. It's not a big deal.
We can definitely take a look at that, because one of the things we have to figure out is some titles and that kind of thing. And we will be coming back to you because we would like to get it approved for October, which means it would be part of this budget cycle. So we're searching. And then I would also like to say that the Keegan report had a lot of recommendations. These are just some of the ones that involved reorganization. There are some recommendations in Parks and Rec. There are some recommendations in police. There's recommendations for successful succession planning, binders, you know, all kinds of things. So I think that this is not going to be the last time, well, I don't think. We definitely are not going to be the last time we talk about this, but this was just a discussion on how we could reorg.
Thank you.
Nothing from you.
Nothing from you, okay? I too want to thank a couple of folks, but this became apparent probably three and a half years ago, that the organization as a whole was not growing at the speed of the town and the needs of the town and the structure of the town. And this, the Select Board at the time took a bold move in terms of creating a position of Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, and the timing of that was perfect. And we compared Exeter to some other towns that had the same similar setup. But I really want to thank this board for recognizing little over a year ago that this needed to be done, and it couldn't be done by us, it couldn't be done by town staff, that we needed to bring in an expert. And we brought in an expert consultant with over 40 years of town management experience, who really just spent a lot of time here with everybody. I mean, interviewing folks, including the Select Board, all the department heads, and presented, as you said, a very thorough report, which I think is exactly what we were looking for. It wasn't just for reorganization, it was just, and they were suggestions, you know, take them now, take them later, don't take them at all. And the board took those during our April goal-setting session. This was a big part of our goal-setting, and we were very parallel in terms of what we wanted to see accomplished, what could be done now with no budget, little budget, what could be done and all that. And you took that and you ran with it, and we're seeing in a very short turnaround, pretty much what we wanted to accomplish this year. So I'm pleased for that. I'm also pleased that this town paid for a consultant to produce a report that's not sitting on a shelf somewhere collecting dust like this report. Selectwoman Belanger has hers in front of her. I have mine at home. But this is a report that we all go back to.
Untabbed.
And just for folks listening, you know, we're already getting a return on our investment that you can't always see. And that's why I want to take a minute to talk about it, because, you know, Melissa, you talked about Russ incorporating some of those suggestions, the low-hanging fruit, putting together the E Team, which is the three of you, putting together your operations meetings, putting together your leadership meetings. And folks don't know, we see that when you come to Select Board meetings, because I think that by having these meetings, everything is fitting together a lot better. Department heads are talking to other department heads. Everybody's seeing the town as a whole, as we see it, instead of these silos. And last but not least, you know, we've seen with the E Team that if one or two of you are out, everything continues seamlessly. You know, you're all working together, and that makes it a lot easier for us to do the people's work. So this is a very significant improvement in how this organization runs, and I couldn't be more pleased, and I'm incredibly thankful to the three of you, incredibly thankful for the department heads who bought into this, and that's a credit to the three of you. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I say one thing? Because I forgot to ask Corey if you had anything to say. Corey has been working with me lots, stepped with Russ.
I would have spoke of if I did.
Sorry.
Yeah, can I, so there was one, just so people understand how important this is, and because you're not, we're not all here all day, you know, 40 hours a week. Both Russ and Melissa were out on vacations, whatever, and Corey was able to step into the role of acting town manager and acting assistant for a few days. And so, I know, I felt very secure in knowing that our town was in good hands, because you guys are all meeting together and communicating together, and the interaction and things. So I think that's one of the most, for right now anyway, the most spectacular things that came out of Mr. Keegan's report, and that was one of the first things implemented. So.
We saw that tonight in the video. I mean, you know, we have a very complicated, confusing issue right now affecting everybody in town, and, you know, it's easy to sit home in the weekend and come up with ideas and call these three and say, hey, let's get something done. And they turned it around in 24 hours. I mean, literally in 24 hours, what you saw tonight was produced. And then, thanks to our TV team, you know, we're the final product. But it's working. It's working.
Great investment.
Really was.
Yes, and the execution of that investment.
Do you need action on any of this tonight, or is this just an update?
No, this is just an update. I would like, I mean, a sense of the board as far as like moving ahead, there are going to be some classification adjustments that we'll be bringing back to you at a later date. But I think just with your understanding, this is the roadmap. We'll then continue to move forward with the reorganization the way it's outlined here. That's that.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Perfect.
Keep it going.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And I'll indulge the board one more time. Corey, while you're here, could we? I think you have one for us, right, Corey?
Just one, yes. So this one is a lot less exciting than the Keegan report. As you know, we've been working with new auditors this year on the 2023 financial statements, and from those, from their work came a number of recommendations that we are seeking to fax, fast-track implementation of. And one of those was around our ambulance activity. fax, fast-track implementation of, and one of those was around our ambulance activities and whether or not we had a formal write-off policy. It's easy, if you don't have a write-off policy on your receivables, to let those receivables grow and not be able to collect them because time goes by, not that you were remiss in trying to collect them, but just that over time, they don't become collectible for whatever reason, and then you need to clean them up and maintain them to keep the receivable accounts from growing too large. So that was a recommendation that they had. So I worked with the chief, Justin Pazan, and our billing company, Comstar, and the auditors, to come up with a formal write-off policy that one tells us, gives us a roadmap for how we're going to evaluate and then write off all the receivables, and then who's responsible for making the call on whether something is collectible or not. So in the pack, it was a memo to that effect, and then the write-off policy as we've drafted it. It's gone through the auditors, it's gone through Comstar, our billing company, and Justin and I sat down with Mr. Dean last week and got his blessing on it as well. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
No, pretty straightforward.
You need a motion to adopt, correct?
That's right, and if you would all, you can, and then it's assigned at the back of the policy as well, and it'll go into our files.
Okay. So if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to adopt the ambulance write-off policy, which is policy number 2024-01, and authorize the select board to execute the policy document.
So, Mo.
A motion and a second by?
Molly, how's that?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought you did. So me and Molly.
You got those. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman, for being patient. I've been waiting for you.
Cory needs something.
Yeah, I know, can't do two things at one time.
Okay.
Uh, yes, the Sester Centennial thing, let me get back up here. When I met with Mr. Dean about how to make the Sester Centennial Committee and events established and paid for, it was, Ms. Belanger, Selectwoman Belanger, said, what about funding for 2025 in order to make reservations or, you know, costs that might come up during 2025 that we need to pay for before 2026? And so that, so I talked, met with Mr. Dean, and we decided on a non-capital reserve fund that would be funded through our taxes, you know, at the vote of the people, excuse me. It's a lapsing fund, so anything that's not spent by, what's the, April 2027, April 30th, 2027, would lapse into the general fund, matching up with town meeting. This proposal actually calls for 15,000, but I don't think we need to do that because the conversation revolved around that I want to absolutely have some fireworks during the year, and not just at the, you know, coinciding with the American Independence Festival. And I was thinking, January 1st, you start off the year with a bang, or December 31st, you close the year with a bang, and the 250th celebration. And so depending on which day you do it, you know, within that 24-hour period depends on which year's budget you use. So I'm thinking about it further, thought that going out with a bang was a good idea. So that means we don't have to budget for fireworks as they are getting more expensive for 2025, and we can, you know, ensure that it's in the 2026 budget. So that, for the memo that we have here, it calls for first funding the committee's non-capital reserve fund with 15,000, and I think that we can reduce that actually down to 5,000. There has been some conversation about putting funding under the select board's special events, but I think this is a bigger thing, and we don't have our hands on it yet, that with the capital, non-capital reserve fund, we can get income not just from the public, but we have some options for grant monies and whatnot, if we have some funds. So we need to start someplace.
Okay. Can I just have a follow-up to that? Is that, if it's, if it's a lapsing fund, that means if we put the 15,000 that you put in there, it's still fine until April, right, of 2027?
Right.
And if you needed grant matching money, would that be out of that fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's kind of the purpose of having a separate, so we don't have to fund the general fund.
No, I get it. So are you sure you don't want to just stick with the, because the 5,000 doesn't have to be definitely for fireworks, right? It could be for matching.
No, it's just to fund the.
It's just a thought I had, or question, actually.
That I will leave to, I welcome the input.
I'm fine with leaving it at the 15. I think it's, we just have not experienced doing a planning for this before, so we have really nothing to go by. So I would, I personally would rather, see the 15 stay, we could use it for grant matching if we need it, and it goes back to the general fund if it's not used. So that's just my thought.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, and you?
Yeah, all ready then.
Okay.
Fifteen it is.
Okay.
Sold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want my fireworks.
Thank you for working on these.
Yep, yes, thank you.
Great.
Exciting.
So with that, Madam Clerk, I will segue to one intent to cut.
Yes.
Jumping into regular business.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an intent to cut for map 46 lot 7 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries for zero. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Dean, I think we got through our three permits and approvals?
Yeah.
So I will ask you for a town manager's report, please.
Okay, so from the Police Department, they are applying for more radar stealth equipment, so that's going on. In the town clerk's office, Jen Shoup graduated with her deputy clerk certification.
Congratulations.
Those congratulations to her. The Webster Pump Station pipe was arriving last week, so that project will be starting soon, so people in the neighborhood will see some activity if they haven't already. The drillers are at PEA property regarding the groundwater well, so that's starting construction. And the Economic Development Department is scheduling a meeting with SAU 16 to talk about the Lincoln Street School parking lot, what the parking spaces for the Down Easter. So that was something that was talked about a few years ago. So that conversation is being reinvigorated by Economic Development. Also, we've been working on our budget meetings, those have been going well, and the police station, fire substation project has four geotech proposals, those have been sent to CHA with the design contract reviewed by Primax and Town Council, so that's ongoing. And the CIP has a finished draft and will be presented to the planning board on Thursday night. That's the report.
Could you just brief the board? We had a gentleman here for public comment at our last meeting, and we had promised him some information this evening, but you have been working with him along with Assistant Town Manager Roy?
Yes, so we're scheduling a separate meeting offline for that, so hopefully we'll be able to have that in the next few days.
Okay, great.
So it's being taken care of.
Tie that up.
Yes.
When Mr. Gruder came for public comment on the audit bill?
Yes.
Yes, we're trying to line up the consultant as much as anything else to be able to have a sit-down meeting with John.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Selectwoman Belanger, select board committee reports, please.
So we had a Housing Advisory Committee meeting on August 9th. Before, I just want to, apparently somebody wanted to zoom into that meeting. We are not televised, we don't have a budget. So Exeter, TV couldn't tell me who it was that was inquiring, and so if you hear me and would like to reach out to me, to my town email address, I'm happy to have a conversation with you. And so we had quite an agenda, so we ended up scheduling a work session for this coming Thursday because we still needed to talk about short-term rentals and the pros and cons and, but the budget, I'm sorry, the evaluation came up and that, so we had a few guests asking about that and how it could hit our more vulnerable people, and Selectwoman Gilman was there and really was determined that most, if not all, that part of the conversation was more of a state-level conversation to have than local. So, but we'll be meeting this Thursday again from 3:00 to 5:00, if anyone would care to join us. And at some point, we do need to look at the Housing Advisory Committee meeting, like we have a lot of vacancies, and that's one of them, and we're really more of a work session, we can't vote on anything. So that, Mr. Glack, he asked me about that, and we've kind of mulled this around a little bit, so I wanted to throw that out there.
Could I interrupt you for one second? I'm sorry. Mr. Dean, can we talk about the next time we meet, how we can maybe, if we can change the makeup of that instead of it being a committee to a working session? If you could come up with some ideas, the two of you?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that at E-Team and come up with some suggestions.
Yeah, I'd like to try to keep it going, but it's more of a work thing, and then we can always reevaluate if we can get people, but we've had vacancies for a very long time.
Yes, that is true.
And I have knocked on doors and begged people, and just people are too busy.
Yeah, may mean that we disband the committee in a more formal way, but we have, continue the work group.
Let's, we can look at some.
But we can look at some different options.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to keep it going.
Sorry to interrupt, but I want.
No, that's perfect. This is what I was hoping to hear. And I just want the public to know that our planning board is meeting this coming Thursday for their second public hearing on the CIP. It starts at 6:30, from 6:30 to 7:00, and then we start our regular business, which is a pretty full agenda. So if anybody would love to come and talk, I know our chair would absolutely love it because we really don't get much public comment. So, and that's it for me until next time.
Great, thank you very much. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, I think after the, the next day after our last meeting, we had the National Night Out, it's organized by Detective Page. It's been getting more popular every year, and it's a night where police departments across the country host events. In this case, there were a lot of nonprofit agencies that had some good exposure because there was a really large crowd of people there. There were food trucks, and of course, the dunk tank, which I had promised Detective Page for three years that I would sit in the dunk tank, and of course, we go through a series of 90-degree days, and that day was 65.
Yes, it was.
So I was contemplating what to do, and then I got permission from the chair and his wife that I got excused.
It was my wife.
It was really his wife. It said, I know, like, thank you, Stephanie. So maybe another year. Aside from that, it was really fun, and it was a great turnout, very, people were very excited about it, music was good. Went to the Housing Committee meeting, the HDC meeting, yes, Thursday, was canceled because we didn't have a quorum, and our support staff were on vacation, so that's why we didn't know we didn't have a quorum. So we had to spend the poor applicant, send the poor applicant home, and are planning to reschedule a meeting before September 1. And then coming up this Wednesday is the Heritage Commission, we're going to be discussing or taking a look at the status of the Pine Street Historic Area Survey that we got a grant for a while ago, just to see the status of it. This is not to say that we want to make another historic district, it's just a district or area that we're surveying for its history. And also, certified local government grant that the Heritage Commission and HDC alternate with, the town planner and I, the town planner actually had this idea several years ago, and we've talked about it on and on, and decided this year we're going to go for it, and it's a program similar to what he had done in Summersworth, where we have a consultant that looks at each property in a historic district and documents what are the, what's called the defining characteristics or defining features that make a building important for its period, its, you know, construction, and it will be a tool to assist the Historic District Commission make their decisions about things by looking at the whole house, materials, period, and all that information will come on one page, and we will have a book for each district, and I think that will also be good for volunteers to have as a tool to feel more comfortable in what they're talking about in the vocabulary and what we're looking at. So the Heritage Commission's going to be taking a look at that to support the next round of grants.
Terrific, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yes.
No reports, okay, I have a couple. But first, I would like to echo what you said, Selectwoman Gilman, and thank particularly Detective Page, who organizes National Night Out and really puts a lot of work months in advance into this. I mean, really, to say he gives 100% is an understatement, I mean, he just.
I'm sorry.
Does such a wonderful job, and to Chief Poole and Deputy Chief McCain and all of the department, Fire Chief Pazan was there. The second year in a row that it's been up the street here, and I think it's just a much better place to host this than Swayze Parkway. There's just a very warm feeling, it's connected, and it was, it was just flowing the entire time. I mean, food trucks were great activities for the kids, the band was good, but just seeing the amount of young families out and about, and it was raining, just like it's raining right now, I can hear, several hours leading up to National Night Out, and fortunately, it stopped raining, it didn't warm up, but it stopped raining, but just to see all of the young families and just seeing it so full and, you know, just, it's just a great celebration. And I would like to personally thank Detective Page's daughter, who came out of the bullpen for about 20 minutes to let me warm up, and if there are any scouts in the area for baseball and/or softball, we've got some really live arms in this town that I can personally attest to, so.
Nice.
Thank you to the Police Department, Detective Page. On August 13th, the Tree Committee met, and we had a presentation of an app that was part of the budget that we approved earlier this year, or last year, rather, and, excuse me, this app is going to allow folks, not just the Tree Committee, but folks in town, to take a tree inventory. It's similar to an initiative that Dover did, and Kristin Murphy was very familiar with that one, and I think Dover did it in like two months, they had volunteers, you know, each take a street, and it was well-coordinated. So the goal of the Tree Committee is to spend the next month getting used to the app, they all had their phones out, and the person there went through the app, and it looks very easy to use, DPW, Jay Perkins, and, you know, and his department are going to help out Greg Beeson with Parks and Rec, but the goal is for hopefully the Tree Committee to have a stand at the election, September 10th, if they feel comfortable explaining the app, but certainly they would like to come before the select board on September 16th, and we've, we've told them that that's acceptable, they're going to perhaps go over and present the app to us, but also fill us in with what they've been doing for the last year with their budget. They've planted several trees, and they're very excited to tell us not only what they've done, but what they're, what they're going to do, and as we know from past presentations, they're an exciting group, so that's something to look forward to. August 15th, the Pear Point Park Committee met, that was a productive meeting. They will be working with Mr. Sharples over the next month to develop several ideas as to how they could put a fence up to replace the existing fence that would allow folks to not go in, but to see through and see what the actual land looks like, and their hope is that that will solicit some really good suggestions for the survey as to what folks in town want to do. So I think that's a great next step, and if all goes well, they'll come before the board at one of our October meetings. So that's my update there. Correspondence, we talked about Leslie's thoughtful email on the senior council. We have a memo from our health officer regarding the mosquito detection, and we also have a public notice. Mr. Dean, I don't know if you had anything to add to that?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do. There have been positive hits on Triple E in Newton, Kingston, Fremont, Danville, Kensington. Those different towns have all experienced positive hits, so we're beginning an adult aciding program, and that is starting tomorrow.
Okay.
And there are various treatment sites around the town, and we will put this on the website so people can see exactly where we're spraying. If they have any questions, they can contact the Health Department.
Okay, thank you. We have a memo from Comcast for those that subscribe to STARS. You will see an extra dollar in your bill starting in September. And last but not least, a memo on voting in New Hampshire, how to register to vote, voting in person, absentee voting, all very important.
And to make a voting plan if you haven't yet, three weeks from tomorrow, New Hampshire primary, so make your plan.
Which leads us to reviewing the board calendar. Our select board meetings through November, we threw this last, at our last meeting, but just to review, I'll let everyone get their calendars out. September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, September 16th, September 30th, October 15th, which is a Tuesday, October 28th, November 12th, which is a Tuesday, and November 18th.
Yep. Something just came up weird online. Oh, I know why. So we still know we have to, on Tuesday the 15th, we have arts and CVA.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll make arrangements.
Yeah, no, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
And we said November 20th, no.
12th and 18th.
12th and 18th. 12th and 18th.
And we did make arrangements with BRC to make that change.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for doing that. And as Selectwoman Belanger said, September 10th is the presidential primary, and Selectwoman Gilman, you're on the ballot, so you'll be excluded, but the four of us will be.
Yes, I might need to not count votes because I have to.
Yeah, we can work that out with the moderator, but you can be there to?
I can be, yes. I will be mostly there. I have a few meetings, but I will be mostly there.
Okay.
I can arrange my own coverage.
I take the day off, so other than having to have some air and food.
And you and I can work on getting some.
I will have substitutes, yes.
I have one already volunteer, willingly volunteering. If there's nothing else, we do need to go into non-public session briefly, so I would entertain a motion to enter non-public under RSA 91A 32A and B.
So moved.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion seen none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Madam Clerk says aye.
Motion passes 4-0. The board will be moving into non-public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16. And can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.